Good morning. I'd like to call the December meeting of the Kansas Board of Education to order and welcome all of you to our meeting today. It appears that all of our board members are present. And we will begin our meeting with a reading of our mission statement. The last time I get to do this, and the meaning is so important. To prepare Kansas students for lifelong success through rigorous, quality academic instruction, career training, and character development according to each student's gifts and talents. We always begin our meeting with a moment of silence, and I would ask you to join me. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get into our agenda and our business of today, I just had a few comments I wanted to make. I wanted to particularly thank, and in all of the ad-libbing, you know, that you do sometimes, you always forget to mention some of the most important people. And I did not mention Peggy Hill and Penny Rice for helping to organize that reception this morning. Thank you. You do wonderful things for us and always attend to details in a way that no one else could, and I wanted to thank you for that. I wanted to take a minute to recognize my fellow board members, because although we're a diverse group, we each bring different talents to this board. And having the opportunity to work with people of different perspectives always broadens our horizons and helps us to do better work. And I just wanted to recognize each one of you for some of your contributions to our board. We're a policymaking board, and it's important that our own policies are in order and are understandable and keep us on track with our job. I want to thank Janet Woa, Carolyn Campbell, and Kathy Bush for the work they've done with that to help us be a good board. One of our major goals over the years has been to improve communication with the public, with business, with constituents, with the legislature. That effort has taken off under the leadership of Jim McNeese and Sally Cobble, and you've done a tremendous job. I want to thank you for that. I'm proud of the fact that we have improved articulation with the Kansas Board of Regents so that our students can make a smooth transition from K-12 into that new area. And I want to thank Kathy Bush and Sally Cobble for the work you've done with that. It's more important now than ever before that we have good connections with the legislature, that we are represented there, and that we know what's going on. And I want to thank Ken Willard and Deana Horst for the work they've done for us the past two years. Strengthening our board presence and connection with the schools for the deaf and blind are so important, and we've made good progress in strengthening those bonds the past few years. I want to thank Steve Roberts and John Bacon for the work they've done there. Thank you. And recently, a lot of work has been done with our connections with the innovative schools' effort and our involvement with that. I want to thank Jim McNeese and Deana for the work that they've done with that. And to the whole board, we have worked as a team on a very important issue lately, and that's in the process of hiring a new commissioner of education. I've been especially proud of the way we worked together through that process, and I want to thank you all for your cooperation and your willingness to listen to other people's viewpoints. And to the department, everybody in this department plays a critical role in helping us move forward with important initiatives. I'm proud of what's happened with career pathways, with emergency safety interventions, with our standards in science, language arts, math, with the MTSS effort that is finally almost fully implemented throughout our state. And of course, the upcoming accreditation issue is one that the department has worked hard on. So Brad, thank you so much and your leadership with everyone in the department in moving these initiatives forward. Mark Ferguson has provided us with great guidance. Thank you, Mark. And Denise isn't here today, but I wanted to recognize her for the fine work she does in putting words in our mouth. So anyway, you all have been so important to me. I will miss being here with you every month, but I'm proud of every one of you and the work that you've done to make this board one that really does have a commitment to students in Kansas. So thank you. Now we'll get to our business of today. Our first item is to approve our agenda. Do I hear a motion to do that? Deana Horst moves, and Ken Willard seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. And in approving the minutes, we have two different items. First, we will need to, a motion to approve the combined set of minutes from the special meetings on November 5th, 6th, and 7th. Do I hear a motion to that? It's moved by Sally Cobble, seconded by Kathy Bush. All in favor, raise your right hand. And did I have you vote on the agenda? Okay. I'm a little rattled today. Then our next motion would be to approve our regular November board meeting minutes. Moved by Janet Woa, seconded by Deana Horst. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
(inaudible)
Excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't look at you. Okay. Nine and one abstention by John Bacon. Sorry. Next, we will have the commissioner's report.
Well, good morning, everyone. And again, on behalf of the agency, we just really appreciate your leadership and support. So we'll miss not having you at the meeting setting up here, but you can always come and attend. The first thing I wanted to give you an update on, I gave you a copy of the 2013-14 accountability report. This also follows along with this week, the state report card will go live, which much of the information that you see in this document, this is state aggregate numbers, but you can go on and find these numbers and information specific to school districts and schools. On page three, once you get into it, you can see the student demographic characteristics in the state, just a fiscal summary of expenses pulled from school districts' budgets, the revenue side. Again, this is a pretty broad, you know, high-level look at revenue and expenses on state aggregate numbers. The upper right-hand corner on page three, you get a little detailed about the number of students enrolled, how many Title I schools are in Kansas, and it's typically about 50%. Fifty to 55% of our buildings are Title I. Little information about our teachers, average age, years of experience. Going on to page four, again, when you go out and look at the report card, we don't have, we're not reporting 2014 state assessment results. The one thing that we are proud of, our graduation rates continue to increase, and you have some information about demographics of our students. I also gave you a document, just three slides. If you want some of this stuff in a PowerPoint slide to be able to share, just let me know, and I can get those to you. One thing you'll notice on our student population trends on the bottom left-hand corner of page four, we are now at 50.3% of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch. Our students with disabilities continue to remain consistent, right around 12.8%, and we continue to see a rise every year in the percent of our student body that are English-language learners. Starting on page five, you'll see our national ACT, SAT, and NAEP results. When you look at the numbers, we are always the darker bar when you look in the graphs, and you'll see consistently throughout all of them, Kansas outperforms the rest of the nation with ACT, SAT, and NAEP. On page six, since we don't have the state assessment results to report from last year, what we wanted to do is give you and communication to the field just a little snapshot of what the new assessments, a little information about them, the difference in what educators and students will see in the types of test items, along with an assessment schedule so people know, you know, at what grades and what content areas we will be assessing this year. So I just wanted to give you, and then on page seven, we show the current board members and what your goals are. So I have additional copies of these if you want to take some with you. If you want more, just let us know, and we didn't know how many to print out, but if you want us to get some for you to be able to share when you're out communicating, we'd be happy to do that.
Did you say this is in the form of a PowerPoint?
No, some of the slides from here, I have an example of some slides that I can send you if you want to put into a PowerPoint. So if you want to include anything out of here, we can make PowerPoint slides for you if you desire. So I just gave you a couple examples of some of the slides that we can give you in another handout. Another thing I just wanted to mention, I gave you a copy of this at the last board meeting, but we didn't have a commissioner's report because it's traditional in November, the High School Activities Association presents during that time. But I just wanted to mention some of the highlights in this look from the Education Commission of the States about how states are moving forward with college and career readiness. A few key things in there that, as you go through, they look at 10 different areas, not only pre-K through 12, but also in higher ed to show whether there's an alignment. We hit seven of the 10 areas. Two of them are things that higher ed's looking at. One of them is a key thing that we're looking at, and this board will be having considerable more conversations around as we move forward, and that is changing the focus and the conversation around how we measure student success or how successful we are, and moving away from the "no child left behind" era of all about one test and really looking at other indicators of college readiness and what evidence do we know that we are being successful. And one thing you'll see in the report is, we have all that information, but it's not part of how we hold schools or ourselves accountable, and that's the direction we're headed with the new accreditation model, is how do we know whether we're truly being successful? We have it, it's just not part of our accreditation or our accountability to where we start looking at, are we reducing the percent of kids that need remediation after they leave? Are we seeing increases in the percent of our kids that have college credit hours earned or industry-recognized certifications upon? Do they truly have those college and career-ready skills to be successful after they graduate? We have it, but that's the one area you'll see in here that we don't meet the blueprint because it's not part of our focus yet. But that's the direction we'll be headed in something that Randy will be visiting with you about towards the end of the day, about how we want to move forward with that, with the accreditation model. So I just wanted to, it's a really good read. Not only does it tell us the importance of it, it tells what states have it in place, but it also then gives you examples of how some states do have it and what they look like. And every state's a little different, but anyway, I just wanted to mention, you received a copy of that last month, but I just wanted to update you on that. Another area that I wanted to update you is states, again, are given the opportunity to extend their ESEA waiver. The deadline for us to submit an extension is March 15th. We will begin working on that, but we don't see much change in what we're currently doing. We have our standards in place, our assessment we're moving forward with. Again, we finally got approved for our Kansas approach to how we want to use student growth data in teacher leader evaluation, so I don't see a lot of change in that. But what I do want to draw your attention to is, the waiver extension is to extend us to be able to move forward in the direction we are for the next three years. But we know that any time ESC Congress finally reauthorizes Elementary and Secondary Education Act, all states will move to that. And there's conversations that that could happen in the next year. So even though we may put a lot of effort into resubmitting, we know that there's a good possibility that whatever we submit may only be good for a year. We do know Congress is about seven years behind on their efforts to reauthorize it. So whether it happens in the next year or not, we don't know, but we will submit to continue to move forward with the direction that we're currently headed. Another thing that I wanted to mention is, we had our first meeting with the pre-K through 16 task force, and the goal of that was just to make sure that pre-K, clear-up to post-secondary, we're serious about having a common goal of what we ultimately want for Kansans and what our role is as K-12 in that process. We'll be meeting again sometime in January. We'll intentionally schedule it to where Randy can be involved with that meeting to then start selecting who needs to be at the table. What business do we need to have there? What post-secondary? What parent groups? Who needs to be at that table to define how we ultimately want to measure success and make sure that? And again, this came from the direction from the Coordinating Council that Kathy and Sally set on with Board of Regents, so it was a really good meeting to make sure that, yes, we are all in agreement, this is the direction we need to go, and we need to make sure it's a seamless pre-K through 16 priority. So we'll be meeting again after the first of the year, and hopefully, I know Randy's schedule, he's already burning through his vacation days, but we're going to take advantage of the ones that he has. And he'll visit a little more about that towards the end of the day. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention, our Closing the Achievement Gap Task Force is the group that we've had in place for about three years now. We've spent a lot of time over the last several months, we met again in November, of really identifying the gap, where the gaps are located, specifically what regions of the state, what areas, what are the causes of creating those gaps in performance, and they'll be bringing to you eventually a proposal that they believe will most effectively close the gap in Kansas. And a lot of it currently is looking at closing that gap of kids before they even enter kindergarten. We've got to ensure that kids don't start out way behind their peers. So it's been a great group. It's representative from just about every state agency, from Commerce to Division of Children and Families. So it's a really good group of, because it's not just one agency's role, it's about all of us putting a coordinated effort together. So we'll be meeting again after the first of the year to try to really bring forth not only a recommendation, but hopefully in the next couple months with the board's agenda providing that we'll be able to really share with the board some good, rich information about what we're finding specific in Kansas. So with that, if anybody has any questions, that's...
Carolyn, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Anyway, I can't...
This is her.
Can I? You see what I was, okay. Well, yes, I was. I was hitting the wrong thing. Mark helped me. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. I would like to be updated on who is the members of that Closing the Gap Task Force, so could you maybe get that to me sometime or to us?
Yes.
Thank you.
John Bacon.
Thank you, Brad. Real quick on this accountability report under District Fiscal Summary, the revenue numbers, are those budgeted or are those set? Do we know what the remaining 2014 will bring in as far as federal funds and state funds?
This is what we polled from their 13-14 budget that they showed that they received last year.
Okay. So the expenditures are actual?
Correct.
And the revenues are budgeted?
Well, no, they're actual too. We polled from last year, when they submit us their budget, they submit what they budget this year, but they also have prior year's expenses and revenues, what they spent last year and what they received. This is reflecting what they spent and received, so both of these are actual, not budgeted for this year.
So is it district revenue then, 2012-13 on the revenue side?
That's a good, I bet you that should say 13, should say 13-14. I'll follow up on that.
Okay, yeah, okay. Or whatever. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
If not, we will move on to our Citizens Open Forum. I now declare the Citizens Open Forum of the Kansas State Board of Education Meeting open at 10:26 a.m. The State Board provides this opportunity for citizens to share views about topics of interest or issues currently being considered by the State Board. The State Board asks that speakers identify themselves by name and by the name of the group they represent if applicable. The State Board also asks that each speaker focus their remarks on issues or topics. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Any board questions will be for clarification. Our first speaker is Beau Bragg, and he will be followed by Tina Thompson and Rebecca Clancy.
I was told to make 11 copies. See, there's 13 people up here, so I apologize. There are 11 copies that are being passed around. My name is Beau Bragg. I'm a physical educator from Bonner Springs, 2015 Kansas Teacher of the Year finalist, and a member of CAEPURD, which is the Kansas Activity, Health, and Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Association, and have been a member since 2001. I speak today on behalf of CAEPURD in regards to the importance of recess in Kansas schools. I recently presented the importance of recess to staff in August and at the CAEPURD convention in October. Recession allows students to be active, and it enables students to acquire many benefits. Research and studies have shown the following benefits of recess, just to name a few. Heavier doses of oxygenated blood are sent to the brain, resulting in focused attention and higher retention, and better attitude toward learning. Physical activity helps develop more brain connections and neurological pathways. Being outside, natural light helps synthesize vitamin D, which improves productivity. And naturally, physical activity is a stress reducer. It's a chance for children to be loud, to break from structure, opportunity to release energy in an acceptable manner. And stress, as we all know, can have a negative impact on health and also learning. Students can learn negotiation skills and problem-solving skills through recess, and bottom line is just plain healthy. I personally believe, and I think I speak for many when I say this, that school is a place that a student should feel safe and provided the tools he or she needs to be successful. This includes a focus on overall wellness to help develop healthy habits for a lifetime. Recession is a part of this mission. If children are not provided these opportunities, then what are the chances that these habits are created outside of school? Experimental research has found that children who are not active at school do not tend to compensate after school, suggesting that inactivity breeds inactivity. So what can we do? CAEPURD recently sent out a survey to schools across the state, asking questions about implementation and management of recess. These results are currently being compiled. CAEPURD is working on a grant with the Kansas Health Foundation to help fund a mandate on recess. Other things we can do, we can collaborate with other states, school districts, and organizations in support of physical activity that have successfully implemented recess and note the benefits. We can provide useful information to school boards, administration, teachers, students, and families on the importance of recess and not withholding it as punishment through means of conferences, conventions, and workshops. Locally, schools can put in place a comprehensive school physical activity program to integrate physical activity, break up sit-time, and increase learning. Schools can also incorporate best practices and provide alternatives to withholding recess as punishment for classroom behavior or to complete classwork. In closing, I'll leave you with a few final thoughts. Missouri, Hawaii, and Virginia are the only three states, according to the National Association of State Boards of Education website, that require daily recess. And lastly, a quote, "You don't stop playing because you grow old, you grow old because you stop playing." Thank you for your time.
Are there questions for Beau? I had one.
Sure.
When will your survey results be available? Do you have a timeline on that?
I do not have a timeline. I do have contacts that I can get that information. I know the survey was just recently completed.
I just thought that would be information you might want to share with this board again when that becomes available.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tina Thompson and Rebecca Clancy. Next, we have Tina Thompson and Rebecca Clancy, followed by Tom Krebs.
We are here representing not only Topeka Public Schools. My name is Tina Thompson. I am the Director of Early Childhood Education for Topeka Public Schools, but we're also here to specifically thank Mrs. Shaver for her commitment to early childhood education and to serving those children from prenatal all the way up to age five, because we know that early intervention makes the biggest difference in a child's life and in a family's life. So we're here to publicly say, from all early childhood educators across the state of Kansas, we know you've been an advocate, we know you've been a champion, and we want to thank you for all of your hard work for the littlest constituents that we serve. And this is my colleague Rebecca Clancy.
And I'm the Coordinator of the Topeka Public Schools Parents' Teachers Program, but I have the honor and privilege of representing all of the Parents' Teachers Programs today in the state of Kansas. And we all want to thank you for your continued support through the years for the Parents' Teachers Home Visitation Program. Thank you for your vision and belief in the services that we can provide to families with little ones by going to their homes and supporting them up until the time they enter school. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That touches me so much, because these little people are our future, and we want them all to be successful. So thanks, appreciate you being here.
Absolutely.
Next, we have Tom Krebs, followed by John Richard Schrock.
Good morning, Chair Shaver and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm here today representing KSB as a messenger from our convention, and I want to say thanks. Steve Roberts was there, Carolyn Campbell was there. I think those were the only ones that were there, but we appreciate you coming. And I'm going to pass out copies of the legislative report that was passed by our delegate assembly Sunday morning, so it's now official. There were a few amendments, not very many, but you might have had opportunities to see this. I just want to go over real quickly a couple of highlights. First of all, we reaffirm the importance of the Rose capacities. Obviously, the court decision's going to come out soon. We're going to find out more how the Rose capacities fit into the decision. You'll also notice on the first page, we recognize your career in college readiness definition. We're very supportive of that. And we're also very supportive of the Board of Regions Forsite 2020 Plan. So we're working very hard to try to dovetail with major initiatives. Couple of things I want to point out, down at the bottom on student ready for success, we're very much supporting an individual plan of study. We don't want to make it a mandate, because we think that needs to be handled locally, but we do want each district to at least have a policy with something along the lines of how they're going to have an independent plan of study. On the second page, number three, same thing with financial education, this is a change. We believe fiscal, financial education is so important, we're going to recommend that every district have at least a policy addressing it. Retired educators, we're continuing to look at working after retirement and how that's going to work. We are actually asking that special ed teachers be exempted from the CAEPURD's penalty because of the shortage we're hearing about from our members. Down at the bottom, state responsibility, we had quite a bit of discussion, not a surprise, about base funding, and you can read about what our final language is on base funding. On the second page, Part C, targeted aid, there continues to be discussion about changing at-risk, the waiting. We are very firmly committed to at-risk. A number of districts would be in an absolute world of hurt if at-risk waiting were to be changed substantially. Down at the bottom, we are very concerned about the possibility of moving elections. We do not want to see that happen. We think school board elections need to stay in April, nonpartisan. And the last couple of comments on the back page, notice our kudos to this board, State Board, we support an elected State Board of Education. And then we also continue to want to work to ensure that government dollars go to schools that are held accountable by locally elected officials. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions at some point, but this is what we will be talking with you about and the legislature when they convene in January.
Are there questions for Tom?
That was pretty good.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome, thanks.
Next, we have John Richard Schrock, followed by Terry Collins.
I speak as an individual, as always, and do not represent any institution. I have a publication I will hand out after I'm finished, because it's so interesting you'd read it and wouldn't listen to me otherwise. Remember, I'm a teacher and know how to do things like that. This Kansas School Naturalist goes out to over 10,000 people who request it, and most are science teachers. And it's about the screw worm, which was eradicated in the 1960s. If you talk to a rancher who is over 60 years old, they'll tell you how horrible this was and how it really, among the cattle, it really destroyed. A little scratch could turn into something that killed the whole cow and wildlife as well, deers and so on. And the work that was done on sterile release using radiation, raising 140 million flies a week, and sterilizing them and releasing them, and driving it to local extinction, all the way out of, right down through Mexico to Panama, is quite something. But again, like vaccines and plague and things like that, once they are successful, it eliminates the experience base, and people don't appreciate it anymore. So this is something that a rural science teacher would very much want to teach. I will simply point out that there is nothing in the science standards that justifies this, because this deals with anatomy and with immune systems and with animals, and those aren't in there. I want to switch for the last two minutes to something that your commissioner has brought up, and actually, the Education Week has shown across the whole nation, graduation rates are up. High school graduation rates are up. And I would take that with a grain of salt. I have seen something that is very troubling in the last couple of years, that I would never have expected in the previous years, of going out and seeing student teachers and talking with teachers across the state. And I want to declare that I work with teachers everywhere from the other side of Liberal and Colby, all the way to Kansas City and down to Shreve. So you can make no assumptions on what schools I'm referring to, and the teachers that tell me things, I'm not going to reveal it, because it would cost their job. But there are cases of overrating teachers' grades and coursing high grades. It's possible because of technology, and it's possible because of legitimacy of trying to get everyone graduated. For instance, in one school, they have everyone's to use a 90, 80, 70, 60 scale, and showing up is half of life. So zero starts at 50. You do 10% and you've already crossed into the D's, grading scales commended. Grades are also visible to parents and easy get-to by administrators, of course. And when they see a student as through the semester is just about, you know, is flunking badly, they pull him in the last week of course, put him on a computer, do program learning, and passes with a pretty high grade when he normally wouldn't have gotten a diploma. That's something to worry about. The students going across the stage and getting a diploma should not be followed by individuals who did not do the work and make that diploma less valuable. It's even worse at the university level. I want to commend you for having open forum, because the race to the bottom has also begun to keep students who are not collegeable in college. Thank you.
Are there questions for Dr. Schrock? Thank you very much. Next, we have Terry Collins, followed by, got to put my glasses on here, Vicky Yosler...
Vosler.
Yeah, Vosler.
Vosler.
Okay, Vos, Vosler?
Vosler.
Okay, it looks like, thank you.
I'm the Director of Donovan County Special Education Cooperative, and I'm here representing the Kansas Association of Special Administrators again this month. So the first thing that Casey would like to do is commend all of you for all of the hard work you do, and particularly the hard work that you've done on emergency safety interventions for the last seven years, and you, Jana, for your leadership role in that development of these regulations that I believe have moved Kansas into a leadership role regarding emergency safety intervention, seclusion restraint. Kansas regulations surpass nearly every state in the Union, so we appreciate your hard work in doing that. I did want to take a little bit of time to point out some clarifications. I've been coming to these for the last five months. I've got almost 15 minutes in with you, but I did want to point out some things that I did hear some concern about the amount of training that it took for the last couple of years on emergency safety interventions. Well, that's because for an entire generation, seclusion and restraint was an acceptable tool for changing a behavior. These regulations eliminate that. So a lot of the training had to do with unlearning what was acceptable for over 30 years. So I just wanted to point that out. The other thing that I want to point out is that I believe that the regulations have a clear, uniform standard. And Appendix A, that you see there is a document that the state uses. They've already begun implementing this in a technical assistance program that the first thing that they require, if looking at the data that's reported to the state, is that you have to have, and you'd have to demonstrate, that you have done these 25 things that the Kansas regulations require. So from Casey's perspective, we believe that there is a very solid set of uniform standards that every district has to comply to. And part of that uniform standard is an appeal process within the regulations. Okay, one minute remaining. We believe there is an appeal process in there. And last month, you pointed out that the reason that you embarked on this appeal process was because of serious allegations of misuse of seclusion and restraint. And those allegations have not materialized when we look across the state at all those kind of things. And there was some concern about parents not knowing how to do some things. And I believe you can read this, but it shows clearly how there are many things, including special education, that is required to assist a parent if they wish to file a complaint or have a conflict resolution. I'm running out of time here, but Casey believes that the emergency safety interventions are thoroughly and effectively implemented, and that any revision should not be based upon anecdotal information. Okay, I want to thank you all for your time. That always goes so quickly. But most, lastly, Jana Shaver, I wanted to say that the Kansas Association of Special Administrators salute you for your dedicated years of service.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Are there questions? Jim McNeese.
Just a point of clarification on terminology.
Okay.
You use the word, you know, "uniform standard."
Yes.
Can you define that?
Well, I would define a uniform standard as a set of rules and regulations that apply to all involved. And I believe that's what this document that the State Department uses, these are pulled out of the actual regs in a very uniform way, and every district is required to follow every one of these 25 points. That's what I would, how I would define a uniform standard.
Which is stronger, a regulation or a standard? Which has more power of voice or...
I think the regulation would have more power than just a standard. The standard would be like when we had the guidelines. They guided you, and it was a standard that you used, but now we have standards within a regulation. The regulation says, "You must do this, and you must do this." So I would say a regulation is stronger than a standard, but these standards are included in the regulations.
Okay, maybe it's just me as a new board member still, you know, trying to figure out the difference between a standard and a regulation, but we as a board are authorized to create standards. And in this particular case, we passed regulations that created standards. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. Okay, I'm just trying. I think so.
I mean, the word gets bounced back and forth, you know, what's a regulation, what's a standard, and, you know, there are those that want to turn these into standards. And I'm quite frankly somewhat confused on the, with the terminologies. I'm just trying to get some clarification from your point of view about which is what.
Well, from my point of view, these are standards that are included in a regulation, which means there are standards that you don't just simply have to follow or could follow, that you must follow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have, and I think my card says, Vicky Vosler.
Yes, ma'am.
If I mispronounced it, you correct me.
If I did not write clearly, I apologize.
No, I, that's, it's good. It's all good.
All right. I am Vicky Vosler, and I am the Special Ed Director for the Holton Co-op, and I'm a member of Region Two in the Casey organization. And I know that Terry has spoke with you many times in regards to this issue. I've been here once before, but I just want you to know that we are representative of our group. We meet every, we meet four times a year, and this is a topic of conversation that we tried to come to consensus on. And Terry has been the lucky one that we have elected over the years to represent our group, and we think he does a good job, and I'm just here to support him and the rest of our organization. I just have a few bullet points, just to reiterate some of the things that Terry has mentioned and our group supports. But first of all, as Terry mentioned, we want to thank you for your work that you do for all of our students and our staff, and all the professionals that work in education. I'm going to speak personally, from my experience and what we have talked about just within Region Two, in that we believe that the current regulations are working. Knock on wood, within my own special ed cooperative, we have not gone to the level of needing an appeal process, but we believe that the appeal process that is set forth would work within our organization, within our region. Our districts are very open and willing, and we wish to work with parents at that level, so that we can come to a greater understanding and listen to their real needs and try to work something out, because we are the ones that are working with them on a day-to-day basis. We have not had any parental complaints, and within my cooperative, not necessarily within the region, I think the region may have had maybe some things that have happened on low level, but it's nothing that has gone to the level of needing to hire intervention. So with that, I just want to say thank you for all that you guys do. It is an important regulation to take a look at, because we do want all of our kids to be safe and feel safe, and we certainly want our parents to trust in us, the education of their students. So thank you again. And Jana, although I have never really personally met you, obviously, a lot of kudos here today, and so I'll just reiterate that, and thank you.
Well, thank you.
And continued thanks to all of you guys. Thank you.
Are there questions for Vicky? All right, thanks for being here. Next, we have Karen Nimchek, followed by Sarah Loquist.
Thank you. I am Karen Nimchek, and I really want to give you kudos for being able to pronounce it, because you would not believe how many pronunciations I get with the name Nimchek. So you did a great job there. I too am here to support Terry Collins in talking about the ESI regulations and appeals, but first I want to tell you and thank each and every one of you for your very hard efforts in developing those regulations. And I want to tell you what it's done, because you talk about regulations, but I want you to know on a personal level what you have done for the students in Kansas. And that is you have moved administrators, teachers, and even parents from saying, "How do I punish this behavior?", to "How do I teach it?" Instead of sending Johnny home for two-day suspension, we're talking about, sorry about that, we're talking about how do we reteach, how do we do a corrective action, how do we do a corrective teaching for behavior? So those regulations have really moved us in the right direction. I feel very strongly that we have the right appeal process in place with IDEA for things like that if we do have issues, but I want to tell you that what you've done has really so far moved us to where we need to be in looking at positive behavioral interventions and supports for kids, and doing the right thing, and being proactive rather than reactive. And so I appreciate all your efforts on that. And again, I will support Casey, being a Region Eight member myself, in saying... And again, I will support Casey, being a Region Eight member myself, in saying that we do feel that we have, the current regulations are just fine. They're great. They've done wonderful things. But as far as the appeals process, we feel that that's already, parents already have the tools they need under IDEA. And in our local district, I will tell you that we very much work with parents. We've done a lot of looking at taking some of the things that we are learning because of your regulations again, and working with parents, and also trying to give parents skills in some of these new and very demanding things that we are seeing today. You know, I think we are seeing a lot of social skill deficits that really need teaching rather than punishing. And again, thank you, and kudos to you guys, because I don't know if you really ever see that part of it where people say, "Hey, do you know, you created a paradigm shift of us looking and being, and looking at what are we going to teach kids and not punish them? And what are we doing to move forward and give all kids, not just students with disabilities, but all kids, the education they need in a positive and supportive environment?" So, with that, again, I thank you, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there questions for Karen? Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you. Did I miss where you're from, other than Region Eight?
I am sorry. You didn't miss it, I didn't tell you. I'm from the Beloit Special Education Cooperative in Beloit, Kansas.
Oh, Beloit. Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, and it's good to know what is actually happening out there as a result of actions we take. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Next is Sarah Loquist, followed by Catherine Johnson.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you all. My name is Sarah Loquist, and I'm here on behalf of the Kansas Association of School Boards. And I'm here today to talk to you also about the ESI regulations. Wanted to briefly, and my comment, my written comments are coming your way, I hope you'll have an opportunity to take a look at those before your discussion item this afternoon. I want to address briefly a memo that you all received from Representatives Keygirl and Rubin, because I think there are some inaccurate statements in there that need to be addressed before you all have your discussion this afternoon. First of all, they state that your regulations only require a policy. That's not accurate. There is a policy requirement, but there are also specific items that are required to be in the policy, including things like a prohibition on certain types of restraints. And I have detailed that in my written testimony. You can take a look at that. I don't have time to go through it all now. They've also requested a change in the ESI definition. Current definition of ESI already limits the use of ESI to immediate danger to self or others. There is no need for the change that is being requested by the representatives. And I will tell you, the districts have spent a great deal of time, money, and resources training their staff so that they understand exactly what is required under these regulations. If you start changing the definitions now after only about 20 months, they're going to have to go back and do that training all over again. I don't think that's your intention. They've also indicated in that that they would like to see, what I believe they're referring to is some kind of an appeal process, similar to what has been proposed by DRC. And they claim that, I have come up here and told you all that it is unconstitutional for you to even have your regulations. Well, they are misunderstanding the argument entirely. We have never said that your regulations are unconstitutional. What I have said is that adopting an appeal process, which will essentially override a local school board's decision, is unconstitutional. And I have included the language from the Constitution as well as case law, interpreting what it means to have general supervision over the school districts. And it does not include overriding the local school board's decision. They also state that the legislature can fix any problem by enacting, enabling legislation. Again, this is a fundamental misunderstanding of the argument. There is a constitutional issue here. The state board has general supervision. The local boards have day-to-day control. And for the legislature to fix their perceived problem would require a constitutional amendment. They cannot unilaterally grant you more authority than the Constitution gives you. I finally want to wrap up with, many people have indicated there have been very few incidents where an appeal process was even necessary, but I want to address the issue that DRC has raised several times, and indicating that there are multiple complaints and we don't see them, and that their attorney-client relationship prevents them from bringing that information to you. As an attorney, it does not prevent them from sharing aggregate data, and that has not been shared with you. So, at this point, I will stand for questions, and thank you very much for your time.
Are there questions for Sarah? Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A legal question, and I defer to your expertise. I'm an engineer, counselor. Does general supervision, as detailed in Article Six of our Constitution, give us the authority to participate in a system of checks and balances?
In a system of checks and balances, yes. Let me read you the exact definition that the Kansas Supreme Court has said that means. As used in Article Six, Section 2A of the Kansas Constitution, general supervision means the power to inspect, to superintend, to evaluate, to oversee for direction.
Okay. Thank you.
Sarah, I have a question, if I can ask it adequately. What had been recommended to us from the Special Ed Advisory Council here with representation statewide was a process that appointed a hearing officer to look at the facts and make recommendations back to the school district. I believe I'm saying this correctly. I hope so. Anyway, would that be in violation of our constitutional, in your opinion, of our constitutional charge?
And I wish that I had brought my testimony from October with me to, because I specifically addressed it in that testimony.
Am I describing the process adequately?
Not quite.
Not really? Okay.
Not quite. There were three different options that the hearing officer would have, and two of the three options were essentially allowing the hearing officer to overrule the decision by the local Board of Education, because of course, before it ever gets to an appeal, it's already gone through the dispute resolution process and the regulations, where a complaint has been filed with the local Board of Education. The local Board of Education has investigated that complaint, made findings, and if corrective actions were necessary, they have made those corrective actions as well. And then those findings are reported to KSDE, the parents, and the school. So, it's already gone through that process before it would ever get to a hearing officer. This hearing officer would then be in the position of overruling the decision made, potentially overruling the decision made by the local school board, or even making decisions contrary to the school board's discretion. And so, as I've set forth in my testimony that I provided to you today, the regulation requires training of school personnel, and it requires that all personnel be trained in de-escalation techniques, prevention techniques, and positive behavior supports. It also requires additional training, depending upon the decision of the district as to which positions are likely to need it, and that additional training would be something like CPI or MANT. The only way that you could adequately say every single person is trained to intervene in a situation at a school district is if you trained every single person in CPI and MANT. That's cost prohibitive. So, you have a hearing officer who could have a complaint in front of him stating that the district should have trained additional people, or that those people who weren't trained should stand by and do nothing while students or staff are harmed. And then that hearing officer is in a position of overruling the discretion of the board as to who should be trained. So, it, really, it sets up a very untenable system.
Okay. Well, thank you for helping me try to understand that.
Sure, no problem.
Are there other questions? All right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
And last, we have Catherine Johnson.
It's a pleasure to be in front of you again today. My name's Catherine Johnson. I'm here representing the Display Rights Center of Kansas. I want to talk with you about the ESI amendment that you will be receiving this afternoon. Accompanying my testimony is a letter from a parent, Shawna Hinkle. She testified last month and was unable to come today, but wanted to share with you her written comments and concerns on the ESI regulation. DRC requests that the board consider amending the proposed ESI amendment that you will receive from staff this afternoon to include a uniform ESI statewide standard that will be applicable to all districts, to also amend the current ESI definition to conform with the U.S. Department of Education's definition and recommendations on the use of seclusion restraint, and also amend the independent appeal process that is in the current regulation that's being proposed to, to be more equitable to parents and schools. The issue of the state board's power to create uniform standards is not a new issue. This issue was decided as long ago as 2006. At that point, the state Board of Education had in front of it different regulations, and then were passed this in 2012. But those regulations were submitted through the process that staff will recommend that you submit the current amendment through. It goes through the Department of Administration, Kansas Attorney General's Office, and the Joint Committee on Rules and Regulations. All of those reviewing entities determined that the 2006 proposed regulations, which became eventually the Kansas voluntary guidelines, met constitutional muster. The guidelines at that point created a uniform standard on use. For example, using, the use of seclusion restraint was prohibited unless the student's behavior presented an imminent risk of harm or the child was involved in altercation. That regulation, which became the guidelines, did not say each district shall create a policy that conforms to that. It set out an actual standard of use, and that was determined to be constitutional. There is, within the Kansas Constitution of Article Six, two different sections that indicate the power of the state board and the power of local boards, locally elected boards. It is a mutually compatible relationship with the state board setting statewide guidance, standards, kind of a big-picture vision for how education is to happen, and the local boards taking that guidance and those standards and making the day-to-day decisions that have to happen to conform with the board's vision. DRC's request for the board to create a uniform standard complies squarely with the Constitution as set out in Article Six, Section Two, and Section Five. So, DRC's request is to take the current language in the ESI regulation that says, "All districts shall create a policy that shall meet the different standards." For example, each policy has to say, "No student can be subjected to the use of prone or supreme restraint." Take that language and amend it so that there isn't a requirement for a policy, that the requirement is for each district and every personnel in that school district to not use prohibition, or to not use prone or supreme restraint on a child. It is a simple fix, and it takes the standard that the, the board intended and makes it Secondly, DRC requests that the current definition of ESI be amended to clarify that ESI is limited to incidents of behavior that are immediately dangerous and causing serious physical harm to self or others. This would not confuse the districts, as was, as pointed out to you earlier. It would merely clarify when that type of intervention is appropriate. I see my time is up, and I'd be happy to stand for questions if anyone has any for me.
Are there questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The state board's citizens' open forum is closed at 11:09 a.m. We would like to thank our speakers for sharing their views with the board. The state board will determine if any of the issues should be addressed as agenda item at a future meeting. Thank you. Next up, we have Dale Dennis, who is going to introduce to us some award-winning schools.
You're in luck today. Not from me, but you're in luck otherwise. McNeese wanted to vote on that. We have six school districts, elementary schools, that was honored by the U.S. Office of Education as Blue Ribbon Schools, and these are schools with high poverty that far exceeded the expectation for the students they were working with. And we're real thrilled about that. And at first up, we're going to ask Twyla Wallenberg, and by the way, they may have a guest with them, but we'd ask you to introduce your guest that's with you. And Twyla is from Hayesville, at Oatville Elementary School in Hayesville.
Actually, I'm Twyla.
Oh, you're Twyla. What did I say? What did I say? Twyla. I'm sure. I looked at the wrong line. Twyla Wallenberg, she's in Meriduzine Valley, right out here, suburb of Quintemo and Melbourne, right?
That's correct.
That's right. Okay, Twyla, thank you.
All right. All right. And with me, I also brought Darrell Finch, our superintendent, Carrie Lingefelter, our third-grade teacher, and Mary Kay Woods, our special education teacher. So, our process started back in 2006, of course, and we took a look at our test scores and obviously saw that we needed some improvement. So, that was the beginning process for us. A great honor, of course, to meet that requirement, to receive a National Blue Ribbon School Award. It took a lot of work to get there, of course. One of the biggest changes that we did within our curriculum was we started the MTSS program, the Multi-Tier System of Support. We added some collaboration for our teaching team, and that was a big help to start that process. And along with that, of course, was the data that we looked at to drive our curriculum. And I'm going to let these two ladies explain that part for you, so, Carrie and Mary Kay.
Hello. I'm Carrie Lingefelter, third-grade teacher, and we started with our MTSS several years ago, and we decided that we need to do some more small groups. So, we started with our tier two, tier one was our whole group, so then tier two is where we decided we needed to get those small groups in. So, we broke our school into, our classes into two groups, so we're just one class per grade. So, our kindergarten, first and second grade are... So our kindergarten first and second grade are a group, and then our third, fourth, and fifth grade are a group, and we collaborate within those groups. And then we're able to break those groups into smaller groups and do some teaching at the student's level. So we're able to reach all the students. For example, I have third-grade students that are able to do fifth grade, be with some fifth-grade students, and do fifth-grade work. And then we also have some students that get the more remedial and that small-group instruction that they need. And then on top of that, we have some tier three time, which we determine that with our Ames Web scoring that we do three times a year, and Ms. Woods is going to talk about that.
Okay. My name's Mary Kay Woods, and I'm a special education teacher. In order to institute this program, we had to come up with a way to shift our thinking to data-driven instruction and how we were going to make these groupings. So the first thing we did was we instituted Ames Web three times a year as a screening procedure. From that, we would take that information and then do diagnostics probes for specific skill deficits, then place the students into either a tier-two or tier-three situation, depending on their deficits and where they were. And then we would also do biweekly progress monitoring to make sure that those interventions were being successful. And if they were, then great, we continued them. If not, then we shifted to a more intensive intervention.
And because of all that hard work, we, within seven years, have taken our kids from 56% of meeting standard to 100% of our third, fourth, and fifth grade. So it's been a great effort, very proud of our students and staff, and a great honor, obviously, to receive that award and represent the state of Kansas. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, thank you. Oakville Elementary School, 261 Hayesville. Principal is Shane Dent. Shane, you get the lead off, bud.
Thank you. Good morning, guys. Thank you for having us today. I brought a special guest with me today. I brought Teresa Tosh. She's our assistant superintendent of our school district. And what a journey this has been. It's been a humbling ride, to say the least. When we were nominated and that process started, it was a lengthy process, but one in which it helps you to really reflect, not on what we've done as administrators, but what we've done as a district, and what our teachers do every single day in the classrooms, and the difference they make in kids' lives. And sometimes that gets overlooked. And it's been a wonderful opportunity for us to bring light to the state and bring light to our district on what great things we're doing. I think what set us apart, maybe in our instructional practices more than some, is that we truly work each day to build relationships with our kids. We don't just say it, we actually do it. Our district has adopted many programs, one being Capturing Kids' Hearts, in which every single day we work to build those relationships and try to find out truly what is at the core of each child, and what baggage they bring to the classroom, because they do. Every single kid has a story, and sometimes those stories get mixed up in the mix of education. And we know, as adults, that if we don't meet their needs in an order, the academics are never going to take place. So through that process of Capturing Kids' Hearts and our PBIS program, in which we truly focus on rewarding good behavior instead of punishing bad, I think that's really what has set us apart when it comes to what we get from our kids. You know, as we think about this great honor that all our schools have won, we have to think about what the next step is. We can't become complacent. We can't rest on what we've achieved, but what we're going to do as we move forward. And as I think about those things, I think about strong mentoring programs for not only our staff and our extended staff, be it parents and other things, but also trying to reach out the side of the four walls of our schools and mentoring our parents. Because I think as we look ahead in the next five years, six years, 10 years, those are some of the biggest issues that we're going to face as educators, because there are a lot more issues coming into our classrooms than we've had in the past. So how do we, as a school district, how does we, as a state, help those parents? And that's a difficult task, but it's one that we're going to embark on together. So I thank you. I know I'm limited on time, and my colleagues have a lot more probably to say than I, but at the end, if there's any questions, please feel free to ask me. Thanks.
Our next Blue Ribbon Schools, Ogden Elementary in the Manhattan-Ogden School District. It sits on the edge of Fort Riley, which makes it rather unique. And today, representing that school is the principal, Jim Armadillas. Jim?
Thank you, sir. Again, thank you for having us. I liken Ogden to K-State football team of the 80s. We were there, but we weren't doing a lot. Ogden had 69% of our children below proficiency in math and reading. And last data set we got from the state, we had 97% of our kids proficient. So I feel a little bit like Coach Snyder. So if anybody wants to name a road after me, I feel... There's no magic bullet for what we did. We actually want to just echo what the two speakers before me said. It's a lot of hard work. And I brought two of my hard-working leaders with me, because as Dale Dennis said earlier, they make me look good. So we have basically followed what Kansas has set out for us, the college and career-ready state standards. We look at the new five Rs, and that's what we did. You heard our previous principal, it's a foundation of relationships. We can't get kids to come to school and work for you if they don't like you. You can't get them to work for you if they don't want to be there. But then you have to provide the rigor, you have to provide the relevance, the results without saying. But I think one of the things that we did best was the responsive culture. We have, we have children who have been in several schools before they ever come to us. We have kids who can't read and are expected to learn by reading. We have kids who don't have all the resources that we would hope they need. We've had to create a culture that responded to not only the academic needs of the children, but the physical needs. We have churches who buy Lys shampoo. We have, we have a church who fed our children breakfast for summer school. I love the advocacy of this board in pushing the legislature and doing the right thing for the schools like Ogden, because although we've done it, we shouldn't have to do it on our own. We have an incredible group of partners that has supported us. I want to thank them, but I also want you to hear some of the great things that our teachers do. They differentiate in ways that are almost magical, and they integrate the wonderful technology that we've been able to purchase in ways that motivate children. So Megan Morgan and Eric, would you come up and talk a little bit about the things that you do in the classroom?
Hi, my name is Megan Morgan, and I am a second-grade teacher at Ogden Elementary. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here to represent our team. It truly is a team at Ogden. We all work together to differentiate that instruction for our students. We look at each and every student and their unique gifts and their unique characteristics. And we also look at our staff and their unique gifts and characteristics, and we use the data to drive our instruction to differentiate for each and every child so that they get exactly what they need in each and every content area, and use those community partnerships and the resources that we have available to us to work truly as a team with amazing leadership throughout the building, starting with our administrator and trickling down to our teacher leaders that reflect each and every day, each and every week, monthly, yearly, to say, where are we at, where do we want to go, and how do we do that together as a team?
And real quick, like, I'm Eric Farwell. I'm the sixth-grade teacher at Ogden Elementary. I'm also the lead technology teacher. So luckily, I've been able to work with Mr. Armadillas to find resources for our kids to use. We have an excellent grant-writing team, and we work very hard, many hours outside of our normal school day, to get this money so that our students do have the resources to make them successful. I just wanted to give a couple more examples of things that I think make our learning authentic at our school. One of them is I run a grant-funded program called I Would If I Could, where I teach elementary students basic math concepts, but also real-life skills, just simply building projects out of lumber, wood, different things like that. Another example is we have a community garden in Ogden. I think that benefits our families. It also teaches kids skills that they're going to need as they continue to grow up. And last but not least, we have an excellent before-and-after-school program, and I think what makes that so successful is that it is us teachers that run that. Many of us, we put in probably the most hours out of, out of many of the people in the community, making sure that our kids get those, I guess, appropriate learning settings. So we thank you for, for what you've done for us.
Mr. Armadillas, you remember the last time I was over in your building? What I was there for?
Thank you, sir.
He was a Milken Award winner a few years ago. Somebody may remember that. It was interesting to see the story that the, how the teachers and the administration fooled him. They shipped him off to some school and then called him back on an emergency. At this time, we want to introduce the, our fourth Blue Ribbon School, St. Patrick Catholic School in Wichita. The principal there, if I'm not mistaken, Robert Lyle. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, sir, that you were one of eight principals in the United States that was recognized with the Terrell Bell Award. Am I right?
Correct, sir.
Congratulations to you for that. And at this time, as principal at that school, we commend you again.
Good morning. My name is Bob Lyle, and I'm the principal at St. Patrick Catholic School in Kingman. Kingman was built by farmers and workers during the Great Depression. A Catholic school in the widest sense of the word, St. Patrick does not charge tuition. The diocese of Wichita is the only stewardship diocese in the nation. More than half of St. Patrick's 171 students are eligible for free and reduced lunch. Yet in 2008, the community rallied again and built a major new addition during another recession. As I reflect on my experience of the National Blue Ribbon Ceremony in Washington, D.C., I got to hear from the 2011 National Superintendent of the Year, Marcus Johnson, the 2014 National Teacher of the Year, Marcus McCombe, Secretary of Education, Arnie Duncan, and participate in numerous roundtable discussions with countless Blue Ribbon Schools about what makes their schools great. Additionally, I got to collaborate with seven other principals who were honored, as I was, with the Terrell H. Bell Award. I felt truly blessed to hear from all of these extraordinary people. What amazed me was the consistency of what I heard, while the specific detail varied or the same themes kept emerging over and over. And no matter what part of the country, what level, or how big the school, the same ideas kept popping up. And what was best was that they were all things we were all already doing in our dioceses and in Kansas. So if I can sum up these things that transform good schools into great schools, they are: Don't play the blame game. Yes, there are difficult children living in unspeakable situations, but great schools don't make excuses. Every kid can learn, and every kid will learn, in my school and these schools. The National Superintendent of the Year said, "We make two guarantees to all our parents. It does not matter which teacher your child has at our school. All children in every classroom will learn a guaranteed curriculum at high levels. And if your child needs extra time or support to learn at high levels, we guarantee he or she will receive it." I believe this is happening. Professional learning communities is my second point. This is a cultural of mutual accountability, not something that meets on Tuesdays. To make number one work, every teacher has to be dedicated to working together to make sure 100% of the children learn. The problems are too great for any one teacher to tackle alone. Teachers at St. Pat's are willing to do whatever is necessary for children to succeed at very high levels. They give themselves selflessly every day. Third, data-driven instruction. Collaborative teams use the data they collect to make things happen. We hope kids do better this year is not a strategy. Analyzing the data, discovering group trends, and identifying individual deficiencies allows teachers and teams to pinpoint and customize their instruction and move forward by using formative assessment. Teachers and teams are committed to changing their instruction based on the data, not teaching what they have always taught and blaming the kids if they don't get it. No one test result will ever be a good indicator of success for students. Multiple measures geared toward differentiated instruction coupled with data-driven instruction and formative assessment are driving force in my school. Obviously, these three ideas are endlessly intertwined, but at the same time, the road to success has been laid bare. The other thing that all principals and superintendents mentioned is what Jim Collins in Good Grade called "getting the right people on the bus," or more importantly, "getting the wrong people off the bus." I hear numerous times that successful schools find teachers who buy into their mission and methods, rather than trying to mold their mission and methods to the faithful employees they already have. If you have set clear expectations of what your school is going to be and how you are going to achieve it, over the course of a few short years, the results can be amazing. My leadership philosophy has three overlapping components which fit nicely with what I learned in Washington. The first is creating teams cognizant of individual differences and collective strengths, developing meaningful, complementary, and interconnected roles that celebrate people's abilities and build on their strengths. The second is offering support through a warm, inclusive environment where everyone knows they are important and valued, and where students feel safe, respected, and pushed to do their best. The third element, connection, supports a network of interest and support where people express their views openly and tackle conflict head-on by naming it and dealing with it. I am honored that you have asked me to speak with you today and share my story of success. I will certainly be happy to help in any way that I can to support the mission of all schools for the benefit of all children. I appreciate the support I receive from this board and all that you do to help us fulfill our mission. Thank you.
Next up, Valley Falls. Principal Susan Gray. And Susan, I believe you have some helpers with you.
I do, I do. With me today is Lauren Feldcamp, our superintendent, and William Schmelzle, one of our building leaders in the elementary building. So I'm glad that they were able to be here today. And you know, as I sit and I listen to the other individuals speak today, and I think I can speak for them, I know there's a short amount of time to visit with you, but I bet you they could all sit here and visit with you all day long about the wonderful things that are happening in our schools. I just want to visit just a little bit about Valley Falls, and I'm so thankful that you've given us an opportunity to just share a small piece of our, our success story here in Valley Falls. Valley Falls is about 25 miles northeast of Topeka, so we're not very far from here. About halfway between Atchison and Topeka. It's a beautiful drive up K-4 Highway, so come visit sometime. We'd love to have you. We're, we actually are the largest town in Jefferson County. We have a population of about 1,200, and uniquely, that population has been about 1,200 for over a century. So we're there, and we're there to stay. And the school district is a large part of the community's identity. And so anyone in that town knows what, what you're talking about when you say "go Dragons," because that's who we are in Valley Falls. Completing that, that process, the application process for the Blue Ribbon Award was, was an amazing experience. It was an opportunity for us to take all of our staff and pull them together and just reflect on all the wonderful things that are happening in our district. You know, you don't always have that time to just sit down and say, "What are we doing? And, and what is the impact it's having on our students?" And, and that was a wonderful opportunity for, and we involved all of our staff in that process. And I just want to share about three things, three main areas that kind of stood out to us, and they are all very interconnected. The first one has to do with curriculum. I mean, obviously, you have to have a strong curriculum, and you have to, your teachers have to have a buy-in to that curriculum of what's, what's being taught in the classroom. Your parents have to have a buy-in, your students have to have a buy-in. We have a very strong curriculum writing process that involves all of our staff members. Every staff member sits on a subject area... involves all of our staff members. Every staff member sits on a subject area committee: math, language arts, foreign language, technology. And because of our numbers, we are a 2A school district, so, you know, fewer numbers in staff, many of them sit on multiple committees. But they sit on those committees, and they become the leaders in our district for our curriculum. They make decisions about what we teach in our building. They stay up on the best practices in their content areas. They make sure that what's coming out of the State Department is aligned with what we have in our building. And so they become the leaders in the whole curriculum writing process, assessments. We develop assessments. They even become the professional development leaders within their content areas so that we can provide professional development opportunities for our staff in-house. They become the resource people in our building. So in essence, we've taken them and empowered them, and they create what our curriculum is in our district. And that, being that leader, then segues right into that next little topic that we wanted to share about, and it's our leadership philosophy in our district, and it's a shared leadership philosophy. Our administrative team really has, they work hard to make sure that all of the stakeholders are represented within the decision-making processes. That means your community leaders, your business leaders, we're at the Chamber of Commerce meetings. These people are coming in, sitting in on our committees. Some of them come in and sit in on our curriculum writing committees. They come in and sit in on our pathway councils that we're meeting in the high schools. We bring these people in. We're talking about our tech leaders in our buildings, our building leaders, which will be is one of those in our district. Our staff, our students, all of the stakeholders, the parents. We try to involve them as much as possible because the education system, you know, it has to meet the needs of society, and that's changing all the time. And you guys know that. So we have to have a system in place that's going to be in place regardless of what administrative team is there. Something that gets all of those stakeholders invested in what's happening within the walls of our buildings. And that way, the things that we put in place, the changes that are happening over time can continue. To make that happen, it leads us right into the third piece. And I've heard this from back here with some of the other people, and it's about relationship building. That is so, so very important. Not only relationship building with your students, your staff, and the people inside your walls, but it's bringing your community involved as well. We have the opportunity to host visitors many times. We have other teachers that come in and visit our building. And every time, their comments about our student body, about our staff, just about the overall learning climate that they experience, I mean, it is always so positive. And it's like, how do you make that happen? It doesn't just happen. And that's what I tell my staff every day. It doesn't just happen. It's because we work hard to try to build those relationships. We're a small school district. We have under 400 students district-wide. But we take great pride in making sure that we promote a positive, productive relationships. When our students, when they walk, when they step foot on the bus, walk in the front door, all the way to when they finish up in the evenings with all the different activities, our after-school programs, our tutoring sessions, and everything in between, the relationships that we have with them. And that's classified and certified. It's not just the teachers. It's your bus drivers. It's your cooks. We don't outsource any of our, anything within our district. Everything is provided within our community, and we work as a team. We're all part of that one whole team that's looking and working for our children. We have our community members, our parents and our families. We welcome them in to share their experiences and their expertises as much as possible into our district. We get them in. Some of the things that we do, Hands-on History Day, provided by our community members and people in our region of Kansas, coming in and helping us provide that opportunity for our students. And not just our students, we welcome other districts in for that day. We have a, and this just reaches to my heart, but we spend a, we have a grandparents' day, and you hear about those at all the schools. Bring your grandparents in. Ours is a full day, from the beginning to the end, closing that generation gap, providing opportunities for our kids to learn from grandparents, from a whole different generation. And so those are just a few of the things that kind of happen in our building, to kind of exemplify the fact that we truly do look at our entire community as our school family. And we're so fortunate to be able to do that in Valley Falls. And as I kind of wrap up here, it's been an honor to be able to celebrate being named a 2014 Blue Ribbon School with all of our staff, our students, our parents, and our community. And we celebrated. When our delegation came back from Washington, DC, and I wish I would have brought a few of these things to share with you today. When we're back in five years, we'll do that. We conducted a large pep rally for the whole district. We designed rosette ribbons for the kids because it's a Blue Ribbon Award. What did our little ones ask right away? Do we get blue ribbons? Well, of course, we're going to get you blue ribbons. And you know what? When they took those blue ribbons home, they came back the next day, "Miss Gray, guess where I put that blue ribbon?" I mean, they put it in a special place in their house. It really meant something to them. Our pep rally, we invited in Slugger from the Royals. He came in and celebrated with us. It was awesome. Blue Bell Ice Cream came in and donated ice cream for the whole district. It was a wonderful celebration with the kids. But more importantly, we held a community-wide banquet, totally funded by the community. Over 300 individuals in the gym, celebrating with us and honoring our staff. And actually, Brad was, we were very fortunate, and Brad came up and spoke to our community that evening, and it was wonderful. And it was, it just exemplified the fact that our stakeholders have an investment in our school district. And it's a wonderful feeling. The youth of our communities across this great state are our future, and Valley Falls community really supports that notion. And I just want to thank you again for allowing me to just talk a little bit. I could stand up here for hours and share with you some of the wonderful, absolutely wonderful things happening. But I also want to thank you for your willingness to serve on this board. It's not an easy job. There's a lot of tough decisions, and sometimes not very popular decisions that have to be made, and we recognize that. But you're helping to define the type of educational systems that's available for the students and the children in the state. And so for that, I want to personally thank you from the bottom of my heart as an educator. Thank you.
And our sixth Blue Ribbon School this year is West Bourbon Elementary in Uniontown, and Principal Tracy Smith is here to share. Tracy?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Dale, could you do me a favor, please? Since this is a celebration, and we did celebrate at Uniontown, could you pass these out to board members, please?
I'll do it.
It's what it means to be blue. Thank you for this opportunity to stand before the board and present to you today the key factors we at West Bourbon have done for years, and most recently, the past five years, to earn the honor of being a National Blue Ribbon School. Our gratitude is extended to you as a board and to the Department of Education for your consideration to even nominate our school. I'm glad you noticed us. I am Tracy Smith, elementary principal at West Bourbon. I've been an educator in Kansas for 36 years, and the last 28 years at USD 235 in Uniontown. Seventeen of those 28 years were spent as the high school and junior high principal, and most recently, the last six years at West Bourbon Elementary. As a certified K-12 art educator, it's been very beneficial to my administration as an instructional leader to have the understanding of and how to help a teacher implement individualized instruction. Some key factors we have found to be most significant in raising our student achievement, first of all, the word is trust. We operate with full collaboration at our district. We are all in this together: students, teachers, parents, building leadership teams, site councils, and community. Everyone has a voice, self-worth, and ownership in what their role is and what can be accomplished. West Bourbon Elementary educates the whole child. With 75% poverty based on free and reduced lunch status, and a high number of at-risk students based on numerous other factors, we have to work extremely hard on earning the trust of our community and our students. Everyone knows that a child doesn't care until the adult cares first. Secondly, curriculum alignment for data review. Over the years, our staff has dedicated themselves to aligning curriculum standards for local, state, and common core expectations. Teachers cannot shotgun teach standards. Well, that's probably not a very good term in front of the school board, shotgun, but we don't do that with our standards because they must be focused on appropriately by grade level and student ability level. We know that all kids can learn, but not all of them learn at the same time. When the scores are posted, we do analyze that data. What's the strength? What's the weakness? Where do we need to concentrate our attention? Data doesn't lie, so we no longer can smile and file it. It stays on our desk, and it drives our instruction. Next, we target the tweeners. We focus on the kids that are right in between meets and needs. Student improvement plans, excuse me, are developed and strategies are implemented to target a more successful learning experience for them. Last year, knowing we were potentially a Blue Ribbon School, we went ahead and implemented the MTSS process for reading. Using the University of Oregon's DIBELS program, we've taken one more giant step in identifying a student's individual abilities and deficiencies through progress monitoring, and what is and will be needed to get that child to grade level reading by the end of each school year. Lastly, we do prepare for those tests. You cannot give keys to an eight-year-old third grader and expect them to drive your car without some type of practice first, or you'll be looking for a new car the first time they get behind the wheel. We practice, and we practice a lot. Formative tests, other technologies, Study Island, STAR, Accelerated Reader, for example, and as much practice materials as I can find and the teachers can find to help present and do these to the students. These help put kids at ease, because we know too much the importance of state assessments. How to take the test has been very beneficial to our success. We teach them to read the answer options first, to know what they're looking for, to use the tools that are available, like the highlighter. Don't stall out on questions. Move on. Check them for review and come back later. And most importantly, to take your time. Each morning of an assessment session that we have in my school, that group of students will meet me at the varsity basketball center circle for a last-minute pep talk. Once we break that huddle, kids parade down the high-five hallway to music, encouragement, and support from the entire building before they even take the test. In closing, it's a best set of our success that we are a family. I learned in 1991, taking my first principalship class, the Latin term in loco parentis. In the absence of the parent, I'm it. I've lived that my entire professional life. Excuse me. At Uniontown, we do work together. We listen to each other, and we're always open to learn, adjust, teach, reteach, and always encourage kids to do their very best. West, excuse me, dug on it. West Bourbon is home, and for most of my kids, it is home. We all heard a story in Washington, DC, from the former Superintendent of the Year, state that every parent on the first day of kindergarten turns their child over to a teacher with the hope it'll be a good day, a good experience. We make it a great experience. Thank you for your time and listening to our story. I and my colleagues now stand for your questions. Thank you.
We sure want to get a picture, if we can, of the six principals and the leadership.
Yeah, we'll take a minute. I think there is a question. There may be more. But I did want to personally say to all of you, we are so proud of this prestigious award that you've received. You're such wonderful examples of shining success that many of our schools are experiencing. We are so proud of our schools and our students and our teachers in Kansas. Thank you for your hard work, for your enthusiasm for learning, and for your commitment to our kids. Now, Steve Roberts has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank each and every one of you for being here today and sharing with us. I'm sure I can speak for the board and say we're all very, very grateful. I have a dream that one day, in the not-too-distant future, our schools for poor kids will be virtually as good as the schools for the affluent kids. That's one reason I ran for the board in the first place. So to that end, I bring a variety of experiences. One of them is working as a newspaper editor for the Kansas City Star. And very briefly, I learned in that experience that sometimes the boss isn't the highest paid. The highest-paid person at the Kansas City Star when I worked there was Jim Hale. He was the publisher. He was this big old Texan, and he was, well, he was the owner, basically. But the next highest paid wasn't the manager. It was the columnist, the columnist who had to crank it out every day. So I'm wondering if anyone would like to address this. Do you see a day when our educational culture pays our best teachers more money than our administrators? Thank you very much.
I'll take that one on.
Good for you. Thank you.
I had two girls, very fortunate, of my daughters that went through Uniontown School System and did a very fine job. The youngest one, I thought for sure, would be an educator because from day one, my kids grew up in a gym as I coached and taught and lived there. She didn't. She became an accountant and CPA, and she works here in Topeka. Surprised me. My other daughter, who is now a fourth-grade teacher in my building, wonderful teacher, surprised me totally. And I asked my youngest daughter, who's now CPA here in Topeka, I said, "Why not, Dad?" Money wasn't there. And that's one of the issues that I presented when KSB called to interview me, is that my biggest fear is that young, talented, wonderful people coming out of Pitt State and these schools are choosing other professions because the economy doesn't allow for them to advance in there. So is merit pay something that's going to happen? I think it would be a good thing. I'd like to see some structure and some black and white on who's going to determine who's going to get that. I'm not a bit afraid of letting somebody earn more than I do. My school system, and I'll continue if I may, please, but in my school system, five years ago, when I moved to the grade school, we were looking at extreme budget cuts, extreme budget cuts. We needed people and paras to assist. I gave up $7,000 of my salary to keep somebody employed that's going to help kids. And I'm not saying that to brag. I'm just saying that that is the family atmosphere that I've lived with in 28 years at Uniontown. So until some things change, I don't know.
Well, thank you. As Dale mentioned, we're going to take time for a photo op. I know board members need a bit of time for a break. We will resume at 12 o'clock for a short presentation on our agenda because we've got a full day, and we need to stay on track.
Six principals right here in front of...
It looks like Scott Myers is here, ready to give us a presentation. Scott, you've got a challenge here, three different groups of standards, so...
We're good together.
Okay, we'll turn it over to you.
Good afternoon. Technically, it's afternoon now. Pleased to be with you again. Today, I'm here with a group of professionals to present to you a receive item. That's why we can do it in 15 minutes, Hallie. To, in the form of three of the To, in the form of three of the higher ed program standard areas, the school counseling, the professional ed standards, and then also the agricultural standards, all this leading for possible action in January. With me today to present and to also answer any questions you might have, but to present at more of a 30,000-foot view, I have Dr. Judy Huey from Kansas State University to talk about the counseling standards, Dr. Nancy Damron from the Mid-American Nazarene University to talk with you about the professional ed standards, and then our very own Kurt Dillon from KSTE. He's the lead EPC for the agricultural standards. But before we get to their portion of it, I do want to back up and talk a little bit in general about the standards themselves and then the process that's followed that gets us behind all this work. So if you'll recall, a couple, three months ago, Dr. Mercer from Kansas State was here and provided you with a presentation around the work in which KSTE evolved with higher ed around accreditation, program review, and then the program standards and revision. And so today's focus is on the third, program standards and revision, which is kind of the chicken and the egg. Where does it all begin? It's all cyclical is what it is in nature. We're here to talk about the program standards revision. Of course, the purpose of the program standards, the use of it, is to help direct, guide the institutions of higher ed in producing and developing pre-service teachers new to the field, and then also ongoing work so as to make sure that in-service teachers are getting continual training and opportunities for learning in those different program areas. And there's 24, 27 program areas, so continual work taking place within that. There are, in general, two types of program standards. We have the professional education standards, which, as it says on the screen, articulates core teaching knowledge and skills, basically what does it take within the content areas and grade levels for a teacher to be impactful, to be a positive force for the students in the classroom. And then the second big bucket of standards are the content standards, be it English or language arts, math, agriculture, school counseling, just the whole slew. Like I said, there's 27 different areas. So those are the two big buckets of the types of content program standards. It's a continual process, as I alluded to a moment ago, in that continually looking at the individual areas to say, well, what's the latest, greatest, you know, what, how do we need to continually adjust and make sure that what we are educating, working with for our candidates are meaningful for tomorrow's students as well. So there's a continual process in place to make sure that the standards are up to date. How we go about doing it, it's not just a few people sitting around drinking a cup of coffee. It's how we do in Kansas, bring together people from the field to work on this, representatives from IEG, the content folk, and this is just our standard way of doing it. We'll have three people from higher ed, three representatives from PK-12, an administrator, a parent if we can get one, if it's appropriate, and then a KSTE consultant. They come together to unpack the current standards, look at what's going on nationally, and then say, well, does that fit us as well? Because what we don't do is just say, well, they're doing this in XYZ state, so we'll do that way as well. We make sure it fits the state of Kansas. So as you get a representation, it's not just the Good Old Boys Network. You know, we go through the different appropriate organizations to get nominees to come and work on the various standards committees. And it's, like I said, there's 27 different areas. So it's, you can just do the math on this, you know, 10 people times 27 different committees. It's quite the undertaking to keep this going continually. And as we move forward, we're going to accelerate our efforts in this area. We do utilize the SPAS when they're applicable, look at the PK-12 content standards, you know, the Kansas College and Career Ready standards, make sure there's a seamless path into higher ed, then national board standards as well. The actual process when they come together, you know, the groups come together, they review the individual, the current standards, how they sit today. Ultimately, by pulling information from the SPAS and from the other organizations, they put together, using a template, which is, I think is in your packet here, draft the standards themselves, which then go out to public comment for 30 days, and then they're sent to the SPAS, if they have one, just to get their review. But we are not, in Kansas, not dependent upon the SPAS. We pay attention to the SPAS, but we get to make our choice. That's the agreement that we made with the CAPE, as we're moving into CAPE. You know, it's state program review, state accreditation, and then we pay attention to what's going on, but we're not, we don't have to send it through the SPAS for approval, if you will. edits are made after we get the feedback from the field and from the SPAS, and it's ultimately taken to the standards board, and the standard board unpacks it, takes a look at it, just like we're doing here, as a receive item, and then comes back the next time we meet, and then takes action on them. And what you have today as a receive item have been through this entire process. And so the standards board said, yep, let's go. This works for Kansas. And then it comes to your level. And it's, like I said, a multi-month process in that it's a receive item, and today's, once again, intended to be the Big Rock-type presentation to say, here are the general categories, and then, of course, you can ask questions of the content people, of course. But then next month is where we unpack it and we actually look for the vote itself. What you have on the screen now is the actual templates, and when you do dig into these and start looking at them individually, the way to navigate your way through this, this one happens to be for early childhood, just a template's a template. There'll be a standard, and then the standard itself is unpacked into functions. So function one, just look up above, you'll see it says, "Teachers of young children understand the importance of oral language." Well, that's just pulled straight from the standard. So for this one, there might be, it looks like it would probably be four different functions for this particular standard. And then underneath that, look at, well, what's the content knowledge that's needed in order to do, to hit that function? And also then what are the professional skills needed to hit that function as well? So time and again, this is how it's repeated throughout the standards themselves. Okay? So with that, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Dr. Judy Huey. Besides the fact that she was the chair, served as the chair on the school counseling program revision work, she also, of merit, it is to me, she was one of my co-chairs when I earned my doctorate at Kansas State University. So that's an important person to Scott Myers. With that, Dr. Huey.
Thank you. Well, I'm very excited to have the opportunity to visit with you about our revised standards. I know that perhaps a lot of individuals wouldn't think that talking about standards is exciting, but I have to tell you that for the committee that developed or looked at revising our standards, we went into it every meeting with a smile on our face. We actually enjoyed, enjoyed this process. We had a great time every meeting, talking about what is it that we want, we want to make sure that every candidate that leaves a counseling program in Kansas knows, understands, and can do to work with students in our K-12 buildings. What is it that we feel essential for those school counselors to do to be effective, to enhance academic learning? Because that's what school counselors, a professional school counselor in Kansas is about, enhancing academic learning, making sure that students in Kansas are successful learners. And so as we went through, then we looked at the existing, the existing standards, and we reduced the 10 to eight, and we updated the language, and you can see through the very brief PowerPoints, we aligned the new standards with the current revisions that have gone on in the last 10 years, specifically the last couple of years in Kansas. We looked at the social-emotional standards, the character ed emphasis in schools, the multi-tier approaches, and the school counselor involvement with teachers in consultation in working in the multi-tier approach. We looked at the importance of data-informed decision-making and making sure that counselors understood the importance of accountability and data-driven decision-making. So those were the overriding thoughts. Our overriding thoughts is we looked at every standard to make sure that the language was updated, the content knowledge and the professional skills that were, that we correlated with the content knowledge was consistent with our K-CREP standards, which is across our country the gold bar, the gold standard in counseling programs. Not every program in Kansas is a K-CREP-accredited program, but even our institutions that do not have the K-CREP accreditation still use the K-CREP standards as a foundation for their programs. And so we looked at our K-CREP standards and we looked at the American School Counselor Association standards. And so we had all of that in front of us, and we looked at the alignment so that when our counselors finish a program, whether it be K-CREP or not, from one of our institutions, they were ready to be the most effective counselors they could be with our K-12 students. And again, looking at the mission and vision from the comprehensive school counseling program, which is new within the last year from the department, with the words that I think are absolutely key, that the school counselor is integral to the mission of the school. And again, impacting academic achievement. And that includes all of the domains, but impacting the academic achievement for the students. So those were the themes that we looked at as we went through every standard. There are not wholesale changes made in the, in the standards, but wording updates and alignment updates. And I would be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
I don't, oh, Sally Cobble.
Thank you very much. As we try to move our students into individual plans...
Yes, uh-huh.
Is that incorporated in here at any...
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
That's, I think, you know, the board thinks of, where'd you see that, Janice?
Under function two.
Oh, got it.
Standard four.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, it's my pleasure to introduce you, Dr. Nancy Damron from the University of Mid-American Nazarene University, who will present to you information regarding the professional education standards.
Thank you. If you've ever seen Heidi Hayes Jacob present before, she always begins by taking a chair and setting it up next to her, and she says, "Everything we're going to talk about today is in the best interest of the child who would be sitting in that chair." And I can say that as those of us who worked together to prepare the professional education standards review, that was foremost in our mind. And we wanted to make sure that the standards that came out of Kansas represented the high level of academic rigor that we would expect of teacher candidates so that in the end, when they're working with P-12 students, they're helping them to achieve as well. So some of the highlights that you see there is, obviously, we want to hold on to some of the national trends that are happening that are relevant to Kansas. And so the NTEST standards were used as a guide in addition to the KEEP standards, so specific indicators used once teachers are in the field. And then thirdly, looking at our current Kansas standards. All three documents were reviewed. Our end goal was to see better alignment between the standards that are used nationally and locally. So the end result was moving from 13 professional ed standards down to 10. Within that, I think there are 26 functions total. You'll see, just as was mentioned with counseling, there was an update to wording, but again, you'll see very clearly there is no copy and paste from national standards into the Kansas state standards. A great example would be standard five references global issues. Really, what they're getting at in standard five is teaching kids how to think. We didn't think that the type of issue needed to be articulated, but rather the focus needed beyond the kind of thinking we wanted kids to do. So you'll see that represented there. In the first standard, you'll see, if you were to compare it to the NTEST standards, you'll see that there is no reference to relevance. But yet, in our standards, we wanted to make sure that we didn't just focus on challenging curriculum that teachers were developing for learners, but rather relevant and rigorous standards and curriculum for learners. So you'll see that theme just again flow throughout the entire document. I am happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Are there questions? Well, thank you. I'm sure after, before the next meeting, when these come back, there will be questions, and they can refer them to Scott or to you.
Thank you.
Oh. I'm forgetting to... Okay. I'm sorry. It wasn't on my computer, and I, Deena Horst. Well, and I didn't do it the correct way, so. And I don't know, I've been scrolling through here trying to find where I saw the term "Common Core," and somewhere within these, and I don't know, don't remember exactly which one had that statement in there. I'm just wondering why we wouldn't say our Kansas Career and College Ready Standards, so...
Well, I can tell you that the committee did work, I think it's been a year since we worked on these.
So it's a mistake if it's in there.
I mean, I think that the idea would be maybe some of those changes that have happened since the committee's work perhaps then could result in an update for that language.
I would just ask that you might check back through it and see. I'll still see if I can find out where it is, but I know...
We're happy to see that alignment.
I've also seen it referenced as, as the college career-ready standards, so...
Great, yeah, we'll look for that alignment and make that change.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. And in looking at the standards, it appears to me that these 10 standards do provide a great framework for training teachers in the areas they need knowledge in to be good teachers and provide good learning for our kids. So thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
Ms. Horst, I did notice in standard four, function one, it does mention Kansas College and Career Ready standards, but we'll still look for the others as well, make sure. The third and final area for today, Mr. Kurt Dillon is here with the agricultural program standards.
I'm sorry, Ken Willard, did you have a, I just saw your name on here. Was your question relevant to the last speaker?
Yes, and it could have come at any time, so that's fine. Since the subject was brought up about the Common Core, can you give us any idea to what degree these professional ed standards were changed in this, in this writing, and how much they were affected by whatever changes came through the Common Core? Was it significant, or can you elaborate on that at all?
And really, and hopefully this will answer your question, the documents that we really focused on were the NTEST standards, our current Kansas standards, and then looking specifically again at what we knew students need out of their teachers. The Common Core standards, the college career-ready standards for the state of Kansas, that document was not something that was used in the revision. The idea would be that the skills and content emphasized in the professional ed standards would prepare any teacher to execute the content area skills that they are required to use and execute when they're in the field. So I think that you'll see that it gives them this broad skill base to then apply as they teach content area, whether it be, you know, content that comes out of Common Core or not. The only other thing I would mention is that there is an emphasis in literacy across the content area, making sure that everyone is teaching our students how to speak, how to read. All of that is represented. So that would probably be the closest direct connection I could say exists.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Morning, afternoon again. Dr. Harpstein was supposed to do this, K-State, but he's been in the hospital. Dr. Harpstein was supposed to do this, K-State, but he's been in the hospital. As you saw the list of who's on the committee earlier, the KSTE consultant was at the bottom of the list, so not many people had to ask before they got to me, so I'm just kind of filling in for the rest of the committee. Again, we did these about a year ago, and the main differences in the new standards to the old standards was, the previous standards were done around 2000, 2001, and since then, we've embraced the new career cluster pathway model, which wasn't in place at that time. So those, that language has been included in these new standards to represent the eight ag pathways, and also to embrace the new AFNR, Ag Food Natural Resources, career cluster format. And then other than that, it was mainly language to reflect new learning strategies and the college and career-ready standards. But other than that, there wasn't a whole lot of major changes, other than just some wording and word smithing, those kind of things, so. I keep mine short.
Sally Cobble.
Yes. I'm going to follow up on Ken's question on, in, with the ag. Were there many changes because of the next-generation science standards that you felt like that the teachers were needing more in-depth than what we used to require?
I also don't think that that was really considered. It's such a broad area. And again, following up, basically, these standards are designed to give the pre-service teachers the necessary skills that then they will pick up in their different content areas throughout their university coursework then to apply those. So it kind of depends on where those are being taught at, at that level, too.
Other questions? Thank you, Kurt.
Okay, next steps, excuse me. In January, we'll be back for a greater period of time, if so desired, asking or seeking approval of these three particular program area standards, and then we'll be moving forward in a more expedited, expedited manner on all the other areas. It's time to revise them all, or to at least bring them back before you again, so that's where we are.
Okay, and if board members have questions before the next meeting, they can address them to you, or should they address them to the...
To me.
And you can send them on?
Certainly.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Well, I believe we're ready for a lunch break. We will resume at 1:30.